I'd like to call the order the September 5th, 2017, regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners and invite you to stand if you choose as we offer invocation in the Pledge of Allegiance. Fathers, we accept another day of time in your world. We praise you for all that you've done for us. Thank you, Lord, for the members of this commission and the members of the staff of the city. We ask special protection for those and the police and fire services that are out working and protecting us, as well as those in the armed services that are keeping us safe as well. Lord, praise you for all that you are and do. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Dunning?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. Do we have any awards or recognitions tonight?
I do not.
Anyone on the commission? All right, so the first item on our agenda is a public hearing, and the purpose of the public hearing is to obtain comments from citizens regarding the proposed 2017 property tax rates. Mr. DeFebbe?
I defer to Mr. Mizel, our CFO, to present a brief explanation and to make comments. Jeff?
Good afternoon. It's that time of year for property tax rates. We have received our property values from the PVA and here to share with you our growth tonight. We have screens up, okay. The total growth for 2017 was 6.2 percent. We went from 4.5 billion, just a little over 4.5 billion, to just under 4.8 billion. The total growth, like I said, is 280,296, represents 6.2 percent. You have to break down that 6.2 percent between the growth in existing property and the growth in new property. Existing grew by 2.9 percent, and that's 130, almost 131 million, and new property grew by a little over 149 million. What we are proposing is to leave the tax rate as is at 20.6 cents per hundred. It's been at that rate since 2008. Just for clarification, our bills do include, some bills will include, the city school tax rate, and I'll get to that in just a second, but it is going up a little bit. But here's all your calculations. A compensating rate would have been 20 cents even, and a 4 percent growth rate would have been 21.5 cents per hundred. But again, we are proposing to leave it at 20.6 cents per hundred. This is just all the calculations we have to go through, just so you'll know I didn't make this stuff up. This is per KRS. This is in your packets, shows you how to walk through and get to the growth rate and all that kind of stuff. Here's the interesting chart. This is going back 10 years. As you can see, the rate from 2008 until now is 20.6 cents, no changes, and this shows our new growth up there, top line, kind of a history of what that's done. As you can see, that's kind of been on the uphill since 2014, and same thing with existing property. It's shown some steady growth since 2014. We hit 3.3 in 2014, I think. Brent, was that the year? We had some, a lot of new construction and new stuff going on, 2014, commercial-wise. And again, if that rate or if that growth in existing property gets to 4 percent, I think we have to look at an adjustment in the rate, so we'll have to keep an eye on that. This kind of gives you an average of other cities. Average real rate is 22.5 cents. We're at 20.6. We're below average in Kentucky, and same with the personal property. We're at 26 cents and average is 28.4. Here's kind of what we think other local jurisdictions are doing. Like I mentioned, the city schools are raising theirs to 83.5 cents per hundred. I think it was at 78 cents and something. I think that's to help pay for the new high school probably. And Warren County's leaving theirs as is, as it was last year. Not sure what Warren County schools are doing, so I showed the 44 cents per hundred. That's what last year's rate was, and the state is leaving theirs the same as well. Just a few reminders before I step down. If you live in the city, you will receive a city and a county bill. You live, if you live in Bowling Green, you also live in Warren County. You'll get both. Taxes are due December 31st. If you don't get it in by then, there is a 10 percent penalty that applies right off the bat. People with their escrow accounts will get a copy of their bill, but we also send those to the mortgage companies. And again, if you don't get a copy of your tax bill by November 1st, please contact our office. A lot of times there's sales that go on and old owner versus new owner. The old owner gets the bill, the new owner doesn't get it, so just let us know, and we can take care of that. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I'll answer questions for Mr. Mizel. This is a public hearing, so we offer the public an opportunity to make a comment with regard to our property tax rates. If there's anyone that would like to do that, they would step forward now. I don't see anyone. Just as a reminder, 20.6 cents per hundred is, yes, sir? I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Jeff? At the coffee shops and other places that some of us go to every once in a while, we'll hear somebody says, "Well, you've raised our city taxes again, and based on what you said and what we already know, city taxes hasn't been raised since 2008." Is that correct?
Correct.
So what usually happens, I'm sure, by the Bowling Green City Schools, we collect their taxes, and they pay us, the city of Bowling Green, a fee for that collection. People interpret, "Well, the city has raised our taxes again," and it's because they didn't read it closely. Our city rate has stayed the same, even with the county schools and city schools at times. We're not concerned about the county, but the city schools has raised theirs just about every opportunity that they've had, and I certainly don't blame them.
They have a seven and a half square mile area that's not grown since 1960, so their tax base has not been able to allow to grow like ours has, so their rate has had to increase just to keep up. So that's, in that seven and a half mile area, you'll have the people that I mentioned, they'll get one line that says "City of Bowling Green" and a second line that says "Bowling Green Independent Schools," and that total, the total on the bill may go up, but our line, our City of Bowling Green tax rate line, has not changed since 2008. One more comment. There are occasional adjustments by the PVA that affect people's bills, too. Every couple of years, every, you know, on a cycle, I think they look at assessment values and make the necessary adjustments, and that could affect people's bills as well. But that's not anything to do with the tax rate, that has to do with the assessment going up.
Just as a reminder, when you say 20.6 cents per hundred dollars of value, if you move that out as a $100,000 valued house, that means your property tax is $206 a year. And just to tell you what kind of value you get for that, it costs about $206 a year to put a street light out in front of your house, so that seems to be a pretty good value for you. Anything else from the public? All right, we'll close the public hearing and move on to city manager comments.
I don't have any comments, Mayor.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Approval of minutes from both the special meeting and the regular meeting on August 15th, 2017?
So moved.
Motion by Williams, second by Nash. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 201741.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of two unnamed alleys located between the properties of 400 and 418 Main Avenue West.
So moved.
Second.
By Paragon, second by Nash. Second reading, yes, sir. Mr. Dunning.
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin?
Yes.
This closing of this alley has, will not have anything to do with the alley that we have in our long-range plans to go from downtown down to Brown River. Is that correct?
Burnt to the Heritage Trail?
Yes, sir.
To my knowledge, no. Greg, can you verify that?
No, I don't think so.
That area around the Salvation Army, that they purchased that property?
Thank you.
Can I comment or question? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 201742.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.2296 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to RM4 multifamily residential located at 1415 Nutwood Street, presently owned by Vulcan Investments LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Again, a second reading of a rezoning ordinance recommended unanimously by Planning and Commission. Is any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 201743.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 2.3217 acres from HB Highway Business to RM4 multifamily residential located at 800, 900, and 904 Boat Landing Road, presently owned by Banks and Patricia Crandall.
Motion by Nash, second by Dunning. Second reading of another unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Is there any further discussion or comments? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Second reading of ordinance BG 201744.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rejecting recommendation of the City-County Planning Commission and rezoning tracts of land containing 33.8695 acres from AG Agriculture to RM3 multifamily residential located at 0 and 1854 Three Springs Road, presently owned by the Owens-Sims Estate with GVTP Developments LLC as contract vendee.
So moved.
Okay.
By Paragon, second by Dunning. I had discussion about this at the last meeting. Is there any further comments or discussion? If you don't mind, I'd like to make just a couple of comments so that the public understands a little bit about the process, more than what I think has come out, is that it's gone on. And planning and zoning issues, planning and zoning was set up to be an independent arbiter, to help us go through different issues without political considerations. This is not a political decision that you can lobby for, as other things are. This is a quasi-judicial situation where we can't, we can only consider evidence that's presented at the hearings, and I know many of you have tried to either contact us by phone or by email and so forth, and I know it sounds rude to do that, but we cannot consider that information that comes from those contacts. The issue at hand is whether or not the evidence presented allows it to be rezoned in meeting the future land use map and the other requirements. So we got to make those decisions based simply on the facts that were presented, so that you understand, again, it's just not a political issue, whether, you know, I've had friends on both sides, so I can't, you know, pick one friend over another. I simply have to take the facts and apply that to the law to see whether or not it makes. And reasonable people can have differences of opinion, and that may be the case in this situation, so. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Passing ordinance 201744 renders 1745 moot, so we'll continue on with municipal order 2017162.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 201774 for an agreement with Graves-Gilbert Clinic OHP Work Care to provide employee medical services, physicals, and medical testing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe?
Heard us the other night Michael Grubbs come up and explain the process.
Good afternoon. We contract out for some of our employee medical services, particularly those that we cannot handle in our internal city care center. This could be drug and alcohol testing, CDL physicals, and some other tests here in conservation. We bid this out every few years. In 2014, we accepted bids, and occupational health professionals obtained the bid at that time. It was a three-year contract with annual extensions. They offered to extend this year, but they were acquired by Graves-Gilbert earlier this year, so I felt it best to go ahead and put it out for bid again. It was a qualified bid or evaluated bid, which we put out at the end of June, and we received two bids. Went through the process of evaluation and are recommending going with Graves-Gilbert OHP. It was, the other bidder was Medical Center Urgent Care. It was a close bid, but the recommendation came down to two factors. One is that we have been doing our hearing conservation, testing, and training for the last several years using an onsite trailer. They can come in and do three people at a time to train and test. They have the historical information on their audiograms, and over a four-day period, we can pretty much test 300 people. Graves-Gilbert OHP was able to do that, the other bidder was not. Also, OHP has three sites that we can send employees or applicants when we have to do testing. The other bidder only had one and indicated that there could be a timeliness issue if they have an urgent case come in. So for those reasons, we're recommending that we go with Graves-Gilbert OHP. It's a three-year agreement, but obviously it has to come back to the city commission each year for renewal, so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Grubbs?
This has nothing to do with our operation here.
Correct. These are for services that we're not able to do there. And we have transferred quite a few services to the city care centers since we started it, but these are for other services that it's more economical or because they're open seven days a week, easier to send to the other, to this provider.
Dr. Here, a part of the Graves-Gilbert organization?
No, we have a contract with CareHere, and they're an employee, the staff at our clinic is employees of an organization called CareHere. There's no connection with this contract.
I'll answer questions. Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017163.
Municipal order authorizing software subscription services from Tyler Technology Incorporated in the amount of $113,716.05 for fiscal year 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an annual maintenance agreement for our software that provides the services for most of our primary software needs and budgeting personnel. This is a 2 percent increase, which is a pretty good, stable increase. Lynn is here. If you have any questions about how he was able to get that increased so low or how we're using the product.
Questions? Call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017164.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017, sorry, 201775 for professional architectural and engineering services for Crosswinds Golf Course Pro Shop renovations from Acxiom Architecture PLLC of Owensboro, Kentucky, in the amount of $28,450.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to do eight and nine as a family of work. First deals with Crosswinds Pro Shop renovations, and the second deals with Russell Sims Bath House. I would ask Brent to come up and give you a brief overview of these two projects that have been in the works for probably a decade or more, so we're finally here tonight achieving what we want to do 10 years ago. Brent?
Thank you for the time, Mayor, Commissioner, and Mr. DeFebbe. The first is the Crosswinds Pro Shop renovation. This is just to get the architectural firm to lead us to the actual creation of the bid documents, to find our general contractor, if you will, to complete the work. So the first step is to get the experts to create the documents for us. To that, I can tell you the key aspects of this project is to, number one, is to enlarge our bathroom facilities at the Crosswinds Pro Shop. We feel like we have some additional space that is probably not used to its maximum mobility right now, and we'd like to investigate how to best incorporate whether going out to our patio, some previous used office space, or whatever the case may be, to create more bathroom facilities for our participants. So that's the number one priority, and then following behind that would be the consideration of removing some interior walls to create more general floor space for the public to come into the pro shop, have a little more freedom of movement, if you will, open up our concession area, once again, to create more user-friendly space within the facility itself. We'd also like to do some what I'd call general things, like update our flooring, might be a tile, might be a vinyl of some regard, we'll see, and then updating just the paint within the interior paints, just give it a new general look. Maybe a new counter, we'll see. And then last, but certainly not least, is an ADA push-button door to accommodate those that need such to get inside the facility, so that'll be part of the renovation. This was an evaluated bid. We had two bidders, two within the state of Kentucky, one from Lexington, one from Owensboro. Acxiom was from Owensboro. They win the evaluated bid primarily because they can meet our deadlines, our timeline associated. We feel like it's pretty imperative for this work to be primarily complete by May of next year, and Acxiom gave us the bid that met that deadline, those timelines associated. So that is really the number one reason why we felt like they're the best for this job. Acxiom has done some other work with us in Parks and Rec, I believe, within the city. They've done some with the convention center, if I'm not mistaken, but they've also done a couple shelters, and they're the ones we're working with, with Shake Rag as well. The new Shake Rag Park is going through Acxiom, so we are familiar with this firm and believe that they'll deliver a high-quality product for us to get the renovations we're looking for. Be happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Belcher?
Just one, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The facilities we have at Crosswind now is still just where you walk into the office and to the left?
To the left, yeah. If one lavatory and one urinal on the men's side.
The entire inside of that building is pretty cramped.
It is pretty cramped.
Not just the restrooms, but all of the facilities.
Yeah, and our idea is that definitely, we have some, we feel like some space on the wraparound patio, if you will, that might be able to be used to increase our bathrooms, but that's why we're hiring this firm to kind of lead us in that direction, and they'll handle the permits necessary to make sure and make those decisions for us, and they'll create the bid documents to get the general contractor to do that. Yes, sir, you're right.
What we need down the road. Every building is built anywhere in the world, the space they cut out is the restroom. You've got 1,000 people trying to go in, use a two-foot bathroom.
Right.
Do what we've got to do.
Sure.
I'll answer questions. Please call the roll, sir. Please call the roll.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
I mean, if we need more than two places, let's build.
We all agree with you, Joe, is we just have fun listening to you tell us that. All right, municipal order 2017165.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 201778 for the Russell Sims Aquatic Center bathroom, bathhouse renovation from Scott Murphy &amp; Daniel LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $493,000.
Moved.
Second.
Second by Paragon, Mr. DeFebbe?
I'll let Brent explain the problem statement and what we're going to do about it. Brent?
If I can, I'll piggyback on Commissioner Dunning's prior statement. We'd like to enlarge our bathrooms. It's the number one priority in this project. This facility attracts, it's open for 75 days a year roughly, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and it gets on a, we'd call it a general, good business days, 1,000 people. There's been times it may have upwards of 2,000, which is very cramped, but we've had them. You have 1,000 people, 2,000 people, somewhere in that regard, and on the women's side, you have four lavatories, on the men's you have three, and it just is not ample enough to meet our traffic, so.
Of them, about two or three on both sides.
So that is why we're here today. This is part of a larger project in updating a lot of the things at the water park. If you remember, a couple weeks ago or a couple meetings ago, you guys approved Scott Murphy-Daniel doing a new admission building. That would be, if I can draw you to our GIS map here, this, for the public that's on our city website, they can do this themselves, too, but where the cursor is at, that is roughly the location of the new admission building. It'll take out, we took, the shelter's gone. New admission building will go there, and if you're familiar with some larger amusement parks, it's going to be more like a ticket booth type of way in and out in that area. Presently, you'd enter through this way, but this renovation will not allow that anymore. That'll be a wall there. You'd meet a wall. You wouldn't be able to get through. The only way you'd enter the bathrooms is through what we'll call the new entrance will be this, the side of the pool, and what you will see then is a lot of lines here, but I believe, if I counted correctly, 10 lavatories now. So it's 10 on the women, and so it's more than tripling, or right at tripling our size for that, and it seems like I'm excited about bathrooms often when I come in front of you, but we're excited about this project because this is, to Commissioner Dunning's point, our job at Parks and Rec really sums down to a couple different things, is picking up trash and making sure the toilets and things are clean and operational, and ability to serve those is there, and this is one of the key areas that when you have those sort of crowds, you have to have the facilities to meet those demands. This, we got, in this bid, we had two bidders. Scott Murphy-Daniel is the lowest bid. It is the bid that we're going with. We are very comfortable. They have done Lover's Lane renovations, which would include bathrooms, once again. They have done, they are part of that admission building that I just mentioned a minute ago, so they are onsite, they are mobilized, and they are going to be ready to go. This is a lot more plumbing, a little bit of electrical, and just some general carpentry work, which would be some interior walls, some redoing, some masonry inside, and that sort of thing. But the public, this is the wall, this is facing the pool. If you can see my cursor down below, that's facing the pool. That would be your way in. This is the way in. I believe this is the, the men's side is this way, if I'm not mistaken. This is the men's side, women's side, who come in this direction.
Are you switching them?
Yeah, they'd be switched.
What, they currently are?
Yeah, they currently are, yes. They would be switched, they'd be back, they'd be reversed. And then the guard room, which would be actually have an outdoor door to it now, the guard room and first aid room would be right here. You would have a small janitor closet, which we do not have right yet currently, two family restrooms, which we think is imperative for visitors with young children. If you've visited before, it's difficult for a child to, you know, if they're able to go in by themselves and are just too young to really be trusted, you know, you just feel awkwardness and that sort of thing. We feel like these family restrooms will take care of that and allow a young family to take care of their children as they need be. And then last but not least, we do have the ability, or the contract does call for a new walk-in freezer for the concession stand. That will be a huge benefit for our operation on that side as well, so we're looking forward to putting in a walk-in freezer, something we've never had before. We have a lot of freezers in there, but not a walk-in freezer, and we'll be able to kind of maximize our space and utilize our space better there. Timeline for this? Timeline for this, so the public understands, basically, we have to be finished by the first of May of next year. That would be our need. So we come for you respectfully, asking you to consider this for your approval.
Mayor, just one quick question. Since we're in the toilet business here, have we given any, and I'm serious, have we given any consideration to Paul Walker?
There is some consideration to that one, yes, sir. It is, it's on our current, we'll call it an out-year CIP type of request, yeah.
Or are we gonna add additional?
We'll update those and we'll look, we'd like to better use our space, yes, sir.
You're having me a little confused when you say update. We're gonna update, but they're gonna be in the same spot, which is one on the outside for men and go through the middle of the shop, pro shop, for women.
Inside, you have a men's and a women's, and outside you have a men's and a women's. And I guess the way I'd say it is, we'd like to, the interior where the men's and women's actually updated not too long ago, we'd like to update that entire space, kind of similar to what we're talking about with Crosswinds. Ultimately, we kind of envision that of having one floor spaced where you don't have a cut-up lounge from the pro shop, per se. And I can see where the exterior bathrooms, the interior bathrooms may merge in creating a larger space for both. That's what you're asking, so, yeah.
Comment your questions? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Ash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Municipal order 2017-166.
Municipal order authorizing a change order to the contract with Charles Dewey's Construction Incorporated of Franklin, Kentucky for Small House Road Improvements Phase One in the amount of $56,456.91 for a total project cost of $2,734,060.99.
I'm moved.
Second. Paragon, second by Nash, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an elective change order by us to facilitate an easier movement to Phase Two. I think it'd be appropriate for Greg Meredith to come forward and give the commission and the public an overview of what's going on on Small House Road and tell the public when we expect it to be done.
Mr. DeFebbe, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This change order specifically is about making some additional, extending the existing project on both sides to encompass and to finish out the work on two different property owners, both on each side of the road, to make sure we don't have to go back and adversely affect them in Phase Two. So it's pretty much to finish out, on one side, it would be the multi-use path, which connects up to the signal at Highland, to allow pedestrians to totally utilize that intersection and to be able to safely traverse it, to extend the curb and gutter, the drainage structures, and the pavement, about 250 feet in order to accommodate that desire on both sides of the road. So the change order is $56,000 that would have been spent in Phase Two. Again, in order for us to decrease the disruption of those property owners, we thought it prudent to go ahead and make that, make Phase One that much longer. So in terms of completion of the project, I think Mr. DeFebbe mentioned, we're still on track to meet the project completion date. We've extended, as you can see, as a part of this extra work, the contract by 17 calendar days. So we'll still be done on time, but just on time based upon the extension.
The time is?
The time is, it's very soon, if you go out and even look through it. And soon, in terms of exactly the day, I don't want to give you, but it certainly will be by the end of this month. So the end of September. We feel quite confident that the extra work, as well as all the originally contracted work, will be complete, so.
Fire up there. I know this is inappropriate, but it looks like you've got Emmett and Wes and...
Recent.
Finished.
It is. There's still some seeding work to be done, you know, to make sure we get grass growing and some sod in places. And to get the final striping, we've got temporary striping down. They'll put the thermoplastic striping down at that location.
It does appear that one of those bushes may be a little close to the road.
We'll check that out, we'll check that out.
Surely not.
Sorry to get off topic there, just let the public know.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I want to make sure that I understand and the public understands, we're doing a change order, but we're increasing the scope of the work that we're asking to be done, not just increasing the price at which the same work is being done.
The price is done at the same unit contract prices that the contractor originally bid. So we're not changing the structure of the contract, only in increasing the quantities for that work. And it's work that will be, again, that were, that was on the plans to be done in Phase Two. We're gonna go ahead and do it, one for, you know, primarily for the reduction and disruption of property owners and having the road and the yard torn up in front of their house.
Good decision. Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2017-167.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-76 for 11th Avenue and Chestnut Street intersection rehabilitation and 10th Avenue and High Street concrete intersection rehabilitation from Charles Dewey's Construction Incorporated of Franklin, Kentucky in the amount of $70,605.70.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. If you all remember downtown, we have certain intersections that are primarily surfaced with concrete. Those are high-intensity intersections, taking a lot of traffic. We'd like to increase the number of those concrete-based intersections to include 11th and Chestnut and 10th and High. We had seven bidder, the lowest was Dewey's. Greg can give you the engineering prerogative about these intersections if you need that.
Comment your questions? All right, did you have presentation for us?
Sorry.
I assumed you questioned. My fault. Call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Municipal order 2017-168.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-13 for the purchase of a cargo van for the Public Works Department from Gilly Hyde Ford Incorporated of Glasgow, Kentucky in the amount of $32,531.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. Our environmental compliance subdivision within Greg's department does a lot of field work and they take some intensive equipment to sites to monitor water quality and infiltration and the carst environment. They have made a pitch that, a good pitch, that they need a cargo van to carry around all their equipment. We put this in the budget, we went out to bid, we had one bidder, Gilly Hyde, and we're here to recommend your approval of that van. Greg can give you some overview if you'd like additional information.
Comment your questions? Call the roll.
Dunning. Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2017-169.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-14 for fire stations one and two drive entrance and apron rehabilitation from J.C. Brewer Construction Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $164,657.
I'm moved.
Paragon, second by Nash, Mr. DeFebbe.
Just like we have learned that high-intensity traffic intersections need concrete, we've also discovered over time that the aprons outside of our firehouses need the same type of concrete apron to handle the weight by, provided by large fire trucks. So we're here tonight to ask you to approve the construction of two new aprons in front of stations one and two. We had seven bidders and the lowest was Brewer Construction. Greg, again, is here, if you have any questions.
Comment your question.
Dunning.
Yes.
Ash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Municipal order 2017-170.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-16 for the purchase of a full-size truck and mid-size SUV for the Neighborhood and Community Services Department from Gilly Hyde Chrysler Incorporated of Glasgow, Kentucky and Jim Johnson Nissan of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the total amount of $45,190.
I'm moved.
Motion by Williams, second by Danning. I'm sorry, I'm making eyes at Brent here. Go ahead.
This basically, as the wording says, is to purchase two vehicles, one a truck and another one is a mid-sized SUV for NCS. We bifurcated the bid. We would like to approve the truck to go to Gilly Hyde and the minivan or mid-sized van, SUV, go to Jim Johnson. Brent's here, if any questions about how you plan to use these vehicles.
Comment your questions for Mr... Call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Ash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Order 2017-171.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-18 for the purchase of police vehicles from Gilly Hyde Chrysler Incorporated of Glasgow, Kentucky in the amount of $342,706.
Second.
Danning, Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Every year, we purchase police vehicles. This year, we plan to purchase 14 vehicles, they're Chevy Chargers. And we went out to bid and we had three bidders and the lowest was Gilly Hyde. The chief is here, if you'd like him to talk forth on police vehicles. But this is both their delivery vehicle as well as their office, so it's important that we get the right vehicle. So we recommend your approval.
Up the questions. One, do we have any local bidders that bid?
We send the paperwork out, but I, this was the only bidder that ever, wait a second, let me, let me check, Joe.
Glasgow, Lexington, and Corydon, Indiana were the only three bidders that we had.
I will, if I may, our purchasing manager does reach out to all the local vendors and encourage them to check out our website and see if there's any bids out there, and she did do that. We particularly do that with all vehicles, just to make sure that we try to get local bids in. But obviously, it's a competitive bidding process and we did not receive any.
People that are on the bidding list will receive an email alert that there is a bid out there and available.
That is correct.
What we've learned is that especially with police cars, there is a whole commitment of a dealership to try to compete for that every year. And it appears that Gilly Hyde is one of those aggressive bidders of police cars, so.
I just wanted to make sure that...
Doug, you want to have anything?
Our local dealers had an opportunity to bid and they knew about it and so on. Second question, what type of cars are we buying? I may have overlooked, but if I did, I'm sorry.
These are the Dodge Chargers, similar to the cars we've bought the last four years. They have proven to be very, very good police cars. The durability, the maintenance on them seems to be very good at this point. The history of maintenance on them is good. And I spoke to Chris Crowe, Service Center Manager, and they're very happy with the nature and the amount of work that they're frankly not having to do on these cars long-term. So far, they're holding up under our, the rigors of patrol work.
A little smaller, does all, do all our police officers fit in them?
I think, I think most officers fit in them quite nicely, with the exception of one.
Not to call him out or anything. Thank you for being here, John, we appreciate it.
Y'all picking on John, why y'all picking on John?
Just push that seat all the way back.
We wanted to stop picking on you for a while.
I appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2017-172.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-24 for fiscal year 2018 street overlay from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $1,840,961.82. And further authorizing to add additional streets to this unit price bid for a total project not to exceed $2 million.
I'm moved.
Second. Paragon, second by Nash.
I think this is probably the commission's, one of the commission's favorite things to approve. We're here tonight to ask you to allow us to take up the $2 million to pave a number of streets in the community. This year, we're proposing more than we normally would because of competition and because of oil prices. It might be helpful if Greg Meredith went through the list and answered any questions you may have about the list to be paved and his anticipated recommendations for additional streets. Greg?
We're fortunate this year to, like Mr. DeFebbe said, to be able to focus on some needs that we've had for quite a while. As a matter of fact, the paving list, as submitted currently, without the additions of the additional, of the other streets based upon the condition index, is about 23 miles. So again, a robust program and one that we're looking, looking to make sure that we do all we can to forecast needs, to look at the streets that need it the most and prioritize those roadways based upon those tests that are done by the consultant. We have a consultant, as you all know, and I'll reiterate, that looks at all the city streets every three years. They look at such things as cracking, rutting, spalling, potholes, rideability, and they put that all into an index and recommend to us the roads that need to be paved first. So that's what we use in order to put together the list of streets for the overlay. Again, this year, a robust program. We need to continue that to make sure that we keep our roads in great condition. We've got some other needs that Kevin and I have discussed in terms of concrete intersections. We had some on the agenda tonight. We hope to continue that. Give you a couple examples. Center Street, where the paving was just completed recently last year, there's some concrete intersections that need some attention and we'll look to make sure, of course, those show up as poor rideability. The roadway itself is in good shape, but the intersections are kind of rough. So we look at that, we try to look at roads holistically in terms of condition, maintenance, and how we go forward, so.
I think it's important to point out, too, that everyone knows, we're talking about city streets here. There are, there are streets, other streets, that are within the city limits of Bowling Green, Kentucky that obviously need attention and need paving. But in some cases, those are state-maintained or federally maintained highways. And we don't pave those.
Yes, Kentucky Street's a great example of that, I think. It's probably what you were thinking about when you...
Exactly.
There are other streets that we postpone based upon utility impacts. For example, all the work that Atmos has been doing downtown lately with their bare steel replacement. BGMU has a list of priorities that they need to replace in terms of old meters, leaking meters, and try to keep their repairs down and their waste, their water, treated water waste down. And so with that, there are street cuts that, you know, that are everywhere. We try to work with the utility companies to plan in advance so we don't pave a street that's gonna be torn up. You can't always do that. There are emergency cuts that happen, but we, State Street's a great example of a road that really needs paving. We've put it off because we don't want to go back and have to do it twice. So we look at that as well.
And we're following up on those street cuts, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Can I ask a question, Greg? When you're in these neighborhoods or on these roads or streets that you're paving, do you look at the drainage and the slope and all of that? Because I got to say, way to go over the rain event that we had was really, that was amazing, I think, what your department did to keep our streets open. But obviously, we have some low spots in some places that, you know...
We do. And our operations guys did a phenomenal job, like you said. And they're proactive. They don't just wait for a rain to come and go and try to clean drains. They have a list of problematic locations that they go out and proactively clean to make sure they can handle those kind of deluges. And another point you made was about flooding. There are places, we're always gonna have flooding, especially when we have events like that. But we're fortunate that the commission has in their, earlier have put aside monies that we can use for stormwater mitigation-type projects. We're actively pursuing some of those currently. We have some more that we'll present to you guys in the future going forward to try to help minimize flooding when we can.
I want to say thank you to your crews for being out there all night long, and that was quite the rain event and... that was quite the rain event. And it seems like most folks stayed safe.
Piggyback on that?
I'd like to piggyback on Commissioner Perrigen's comments about also their ability to communicate with Kim Lancaster so that the public could be made aware of what streets were flooding. I thought Kim and Public Works Operation Division during the rain did an outstanding job of not only keeping the streets safe, but notifying the public where they could and could not safely travel during that event.
It wasn't only flooding with this event. There were trees down everywhere. So she did a, a super job on Facebook and Twitter letting folks know.
But I spoke to Kim about it, and she was quick to point out that she would, she would be helpless with that information without Public Works.
Go ahead.
Sixty's raining. We're, we're going to have some standing water, am I right?
Yes, that's true. Yes. Luckily, it didn't come all at once like it did in Houston, so we, it was over the whole day. So it was a large event regardless, a record event almost.
List of streets in our packet is the streets that you plan to pave and they'll be posted on the website?
Well, tomorrow, as early as tomorrow, based upon approval. Yes.
Go there and check to see if there's streets on it then. Any other comments?
A question. What does EOP mean?
End of pavement?
Thank you.
Or end of pavement. It depends on, yeah, end of pavement, I think, in this case.
Thank you.
Denning? Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-173.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting a grant agreement among the Bowling Green, Warren County Regional Airport Board, the City of Bowling Green, Warren County, and the Federal Aviation Administration for matching funds to conduct a wildlife hazard assessment and an environmental study and preliminary design for perimeter fencing for the Bowling Green, Warren County Regional Airport.
I'll move.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Williams, Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. Since Katie works with Rob Barnett on these airport grants, it might be appropriate for Kate to take us around the field on this grant. Kate?
This is a typical grant agreement that we've done in the past with the airport board where they apply and receive funding from the FAA. There's a match requirement, ten percent of which is covered by the state. Five percent is covered between the city and county. So two and a half percent of that grant match is the requirement of the city. And in this case, it's two thousand one hundred nine dollars. And this is a grant to provide funding for the preliminary design of that perimeter fence, as mentioned in the title.
I'll answer your questions. Colerole.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-174.
Municipal Order authorizing the conveyance of approximately zero-point-five-one acre of city-owned surplus property located at the corner of East Main Avenue and Park Street to Bowling Green Municipal Utilities.
I'm moved.
By Williams, second by Nash, Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been approached by BGMU to transfer some property that we have to them. It might be appropriate for Gene, who's been negotiating that transfer. Gene?
Yes, sir. Like I said, if you're at the front door of Brent's building just to the right, it's about a half an acre lot. If you look at it, it's already a pump house there. It's already covered with water easements and electric easement as well, too. The city has no need for the property. You can't use it. You can't develop it. I did check with Brent. It does not impact his development at all. It does not also impact the new houses that are coming up. So we agree with BGMU that if they wanted this property, that we'd recommend to the Board of Commissioners that the city would convey it to them.
Comments, request? Colerole.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order 2017-175.
Municipal Order authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into grant agreements for select neighborhood action program grants with various neighborhoods.
I'll move.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Williams, Mr. Fibo.
Another one of our favorite things to do each year is to award SNAP grants. I would ask Karen Foley, the overseer of that process, to come forward. Karen?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'm Karen Foley, Neighborhood Services Coordinator for the City of Bowling Green and the Administrator for the Select Neighborhood Action Program. And I just want to tell you all and City Manager, Mr. DeFebbo, thank you for, again, funding our SNAP grant fund. This is our nineteenth grant cycle that we've conducted this year. We have ten applicants for nine different projects. That's because we have two groups that are going together to apply for the same project. We do have some of the representatives from our applicant organizations who are here today. If I could get you all to please stand and wave. Thank you. I do want to thank all of our applicants for putting in the time and effort it takes to put these applications together and these project proposals. I think we have a nice range of different kinds of projects in this batch this year. I think you've got a listing of all of those. We do have some carryover funds from prior fiscal years that we had available to apply to these grants. We do have a multidisciplinary committee that looks at all of these projects, all of the applications, and scores them. I go through and make sure that they've all met their eligibility requirements. And from that, we provide a ranking system that helps us know how many projects we can fund. And so this year, we have, like I said, ten applicants for nine projects totaling fifty-three thousand four hundred and forty dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about any of those.
I'll answer your questions.
There's some really cool projects in there.
Yeah, I think so.
Glad we're able to continue this.
Thank you.
Please, Colerole.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-176.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of a grant application to and acceptance of grant funds from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for fiscal year 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funds in the amount of thirty-one thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars.
Second.
Nash, second.
Considering some of the nuance involved in this grant this year, I thought it'd be appropriate for Brent Childers to come forward and explain about the grant and the commitments that we have to make.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbo, Mayor and Commissioners. This grant is, is like any other federal funding. Anytime there's federal funding involved, there's, there's rules that are attached to it. And that's what Nick and I's responsibility is, is, is the oversee of our federal funding is on behalf of the entire city, is to make sure that we're staying in compliance with those rules. So just like we have to do environmental reviews for projects, we have to do historic preservation for projects, we have to pay Davis Bacon wages on projects, there's rules that are attached to federal money. The old adage, there's no such thing as free money. That's especially true when it comes to federal funds. And that's no different than this. So this is our JAG funding. And what this is, is for the police department. It's actually split. We receive half of the funding here at the, for the Bowling Green Police Department to purchase portable radios, mobile radios, I'm sorry, the mobile radios that actually go in the car. So the ones that are in service now are out of date. They need to be replaced. So the, the police department is using budget and these grant funds to replace some of those as they go. So I think this covers about three radios. The other portion is split with the Warren County Attorney's Office to do DUI prosecution because we're really a joint applicant. Whenever it comes to the criminal justice system, we are a partner with the county in that, in the fact that we enforce the laws here in the city, but we do not incarcerate or do we prosecute the cases. So that is dependent on the county. So that's where that partnership really comes together. And that's why we're called disparate applicants. So we have to partner together as part of this application. So with this come rules attached to it. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions that anyone may have.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Welcome?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2017-46.
Ordinance relating to property tax rates, ordinance setting 2017 property taxes, property tax rates, franchise tax rates, and improvement assessment rates and setting forth guidelines for payment penalty and interest.
I'll move.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Williams.
Jeff gave an overview of the tax rates, and we're here tonight to act on those. Do you want any more comments from Jeff?
No, no tax.
Read, read Jeff's lips. No new taxes.
The comments.
Proud of that, by the way. I'm sure you are.
Absolutely.
Colerole.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-177.
Municipal Order approving a payment in lieu of taxes agreement among Billstein Cold Rolled Steel LP, Warren County, and the Warren County Board of Education and the City of Bowling Green.
I'll move.
Second.
Perrigen, second. Williams, Mr.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to do a tag team here. We have Meredith Rozansky and Gene Harmer are going to talk to you about the payment in lieu of taxes at Billstein. When we start out with Gene, then we can go to Meredith first. I mean, second. Is that okay? Gene?
If you recall, we've done a number of these. But in Billstein, in 2013, the city granted a JDI P to them. Since then, Warren County has issued an industrial revenue bond to pay for construction of that facility. That removed that property from the tax rolls. With this agreement, Billstein now agrees to pay property tax, at least in portions. Warren County Schools will get paid in full, one hundred percent for the full twenty years. The city and county will not get any property tax for the first five years. And then we will get fifty percent for the years sixteen through twenty. Once the industrial bonds are paid off and the property is conveyed back, then it comes back on the pay, on the property tax roll, and we go back up to a hundred percent.
Maybe Meredith could add a few background comments about this company and how it's doing out there?
We are very excited to have Billstein located in our community. Just to remind you, this was a hundred and twenty-nine million dollar project. At the time, in 2013, it was the largest economic development attraction project in the state of Kentucky. And they are also bringing with them ninety new positions, very well-paid positions. They are finishing up their construction, getting ready for their big grand opening later this month. And so we are getting ready to fi, close finally on the bonds with the county on the fifteenth of this month. This pilot agreement was negotiated with them originally in concurrence with you guys at the beginning of the project. And they're just sort of getting all the paperwork in line for the closing on the fifteenth. But very excited to have them here, and they are a wonderful addition to our community. So thank you very much for your support.
That starts in year six, doesn't it? The, the money we, we would get. The first five years are free, but the six years.
Yes, up the question. Meredith?
Sir?
Get me out. You said they are going to be bringing ninety positions, people into Bowling Green?
They will provide ninety open positions. They're actually hoping to hire from here. Currently, as you know, we have quite a shortage in our area. So they have been successful in ramping up their initial productions. But as they continue to ramp and get towards full employment, they'll absolutely be looking to our public workforce system to help identify those candidates.
The other part of that is that there are going to be some positions that we do not have, that I'm sure they will be looking for in some, some ways or another. As an example, engineers. And what do we have already in place that can prepare an individual, let's say that has a bachelor's or above degree, for a job with them? Are they going to set up a training program for these individuals?
They actually do have a very specialized process. What they make, if you're not familiar with, is automotive parts that are sort of safety-related. So think of the steel that has very high tensile strength. That has to be sort of perfect, if you will. So the belt buckles on your seat belts, the rails that hold your seat in place in the car, those things in the car that have very high safety ratings, that's what they make. So they do have a very specialized process. And the people that they have hired locally to date, they've actually sent them to Germany to train for a rather extensive period of time. So they're being trained at their other facilities and then brought back here to run this plant.
How long were they in Germany?
I think they were there five to six weeks, but it's probably depending on position. It was a very good experience for the, the people that were able to go, opened them up to a whole different world of opportunity.
So who are the people with, and their background? Do we need to send and to hire? In other words, and we've talked in the past personally about some things. And some of us get calls. I know I do. What do I need to do when an individual, in my opinion, fits the background you may be needing? What do I do?
What I would do right now is refer them to the public workforce system, to the Career Center on Chestnut Street. They're the ones that are sort of the keeper of the open positions. And they can help them decide whether or not they are qualified for a position. And if they're not, if they qualify for, we owe a funding, they can refer them to training. But nationally and internationally, we have a shortage of those skilled trades. So think of the, the trades that Eric is teaching, Dr. Keeling, out at the Area Technology Center. So graduating students that are certified welders, that are certified NIM certification in robotics. They're having, people are having trouble finding people that have a PLC background. You can make six figures in this community if you have a background in PLCs. They're hard to find, but they're hard to find globally. So we need to do a better job of educating people on what those opportunities are and then how to access that training.
What are PLCs?
If you look at the, if you go into a manufacturing facility and you look at like a control panel of where everything is hooked up to, that's a PLC. And so you need people that can run those and that can troubleshoot them and that can repair them. It's a very specialized skill. But basically, if you have a high mechanical aptitude and you have the ability to learn technology quickly, you can do very well.
So if I've got an individual, got his bachelor's degree and above, or a master's degree, having made good grades, is that person, a person that needs to be sent to the
Depends on what their degree was in. Because quite honestly, if they have a, even a doctorate-level degree in philosophy, it doesn't mean it's necessarily going to translate well to a job that requires a mechanical aptitude. So it depends on what their degree was in. I'm an accountant, and they don't want me running those machines. But I have a master's degree.
Well, get out there. Well, that helps us because I don't know that we haven't put out a false picture that we can take you and train you. And I realize there are specific jobs that one without that specific background can handle. But I, I think we've put a, maybe a false picture out there, that if you've got a good background, you have a degree and so on and so on, we can have a job for you with the group of people, group of companies, and the different types of companies we're asking to come in. There is a job. If you don't have this specific background, we'll train you. I, I just want to make sure we're clear on that, that everybody that is not going to get a job or is not going to fit in to one of these groupings of proposed jobs that are coming into the City of Bowling Green and the county of Warren.
I think it's a bigger issue than that. I think as a country, we've done a great job of brainwashing everybody that you sort of have to go to college. The reality is, is that only twenty percent of the positions for the last fifty years have required a college degree, and that's going to be true for the next fifty years. And so we need to have a realistic, honest conversation about what are the knowledge, skills, and abilities required for each position? What's the investment in education you need to have in order to get that position? And what's that return on investment going to be as far as what you will earn when you get out? And that's why we're starting a very aggressive campaign with SCK Launch in the schools, so we can have that conversation, and they're making informed choices.
Well, we're here to help.
Appreciate it. We'll get there.
Questions? Appreciate it. Please, Colerole.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Last item on the agenda. We have a public comments section. If anybody from the public would like to come up and make
I'm married.
Aware of some information, we'd be happy to take that to you now. Seeing no one? Okay. Okay.
Okay, um, okay. This is, I have three things to talk about. The Fairness Act. You know what I think about the Fairness Act? You should pass it. Even though, you know, you don't wanna pass it, and I understand that, but you should pass it because it's the right thing to do. Okay? Two things, the small business development. The idea of the small business development, um, need funding, you know, actually, you cut out the small business development, and that's a bad ideal, you know? And I don't understand why you don't understand that, you know? But I understand that you're doing your job, but you need to understand that funding should be to develop businesses, to make businesses grow, you know? That's how you make a city grow. That's how you help people get really good jobs. The businesses have to grow. Two. Now, the police force, okay? What's going on with the police force is, this is what's going on, right here. On the internet, right now, on the internet.
You have to go to, stay at the mic so we can hear you.
On the internet, this is called a scam, okay? And on the internet, when you call the police, the police, okay, they say that you cannot, they help people, but they can't do anything because they don't have any departments, or they don't have any people who really specialize in scams. The internet is everywhere, and you believe, and what's gonna happen is people are being scammed every day on the internet, okay? And what we need to do is have a department specialize in the police force for scams. That's what we need to do. We need to protect our senior citizens, and we need to protect people from scams, because what's happening is people are getting scammed on the internet, and we can't help them. And they say we can talk to the FBI, but why isn't the police force doing something about it? That's what we pay our taxpayers' money to, to the police force, to do something about scams, okay? People are being scammed every day, so we need to do something about this. Now, the mayor, you can tell the mayor what I said, because he's gone, and I have no idea why he went, but.
I'm the mayor right now, and Mayor Wilkerson had to leave. He has a sickness in his family, he had to leave. He told me he was gonna be leaving at this time, so we will be glad to hear, up until your three minutes, and it's getting close.
Okay. So what we need to do is, we need to hire a police officer just for scams. We need to protect people from scams. All, we need to put somebody on duty just for scams. That's what we need to do in Bowling Green. So I want you to relay that information to the mayor so he'll know. And this is, this is not for, this is not for, this is for the citizens of Bowling Green. This is to protect the senior citizens and protect people who are not really appealed for people scamming them. Because I, it's okay now, I fixed it.
Your time's up.
Right.
Let me just respond briefly. First of all, when our police departments hear about scams, we look into them immediately. Don't know where you got the information that we didn't. Let me just relay here. Bowling Green, Kentucky has one of the best police departments in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Let's don't forget that. Second of all, I'm, I'm, I won't get to that. Second of all, as you are well aware, the police, Bowling Green Police Department was brought into the news several months ago, maybe a year or so, pertaining to our lack of policemen, certain groups of policemen. The City of Bowling Green to this date has passed that expectation with a group of citizens who are the ones that are making decisions as to how we employ policemen, policewomen, their color, and so on. And we've done an excellent job. I think the third island, small business. People in our community, I think, and maybe this is my own opinion, to realize that the City of Bowling Green and the funds that we have coming into the city, just like you heard a few minutes ago, we have to pay bills. We have to buy cars for policemen. We have to buy fire trucks for firemen. We have to pave streets. We have to fill potholes. Those are the responsibilities of the City of Bowling Green, and I would say other cities in the Commonwealth of Kentucky and everywhere else. It is not, let me finish. Your time's over. It is not our responsibility to take everyone's backyard project and bring it into the City of Bowling Green and pay for it. It, it doesn't work that way. Those are the responsibilities we have, the ones I just mentioned. That is by law. We don't have to, and we don't have the money to fund everybody else's project that they bring down here and knock on the door. If there are projects to be funded by the wishes of some or a good many, then they don't need to go to Quicken Loans or the bank over here on the corner. We can't, and we're not, gonna fund everything that one brings to this table. We can't. You saw, we're buying three hundred police cars. We're buying those cars because it's our responsibility. Okay, next. Three minutes.
I'm Jeremy McFarland. I live at one ninety-eight Old Porter Pike. I'm a senior at WKU where I organize a group.
Old Porter Pike. Now, when you say Old Porter Pike, do you live in the city?
My three minutes?
We'll give you appropriate time. My question is, do you live in the city limits of Bowling Green?
Yes.
Okay, good. Go ahead. Time starts right now.
Hi, I'm Jeremy McFarland, one ninety-eight Old Porter Pike. I'm a senior at WKU where I organize a group for other transgender, non-binary, gender nonconforming, and questioning students. I spoke to you all once before back in March. At that time, I told you about what it was like to grow up transgender in a town without a fairness ordinance. I spoke about the discrimination I and my family faced and continue to face, but especially about the emotional impact it had on me. Knowing that my town did not see me as worthy of protecting was massively harmful to my mental health and continues to be a heavy psychological weight. After I spoke last time, I came to the bench and talked briefly with Commissioners Paragon and Williams. Commissioner Paragon told me that she accepted me, and Commissioner Williams told me passing a fairness ordinance wouldn't change anything. I wanted to have the opportunity to speak on those sentiments specifically because I've heard them many times before. I'm tired of coming before teachers, employers, judges, and city commissioners and being told that I am accepted, when those same people are the ones actively causing my suffering. When I showed up to court to have my name changed, my request was initially denied, but the judge made a point to tell me she accepted me. When I went to have my high school transcripts amended last month, I was refused. However, the Board of Education wanted to be sure I knew they accepted me. And when I was fifteen and ready to kill myself, the therapists who refused to help me always told me they accepted me. You are no different from any of them. In the face of your inaction to pass basic civil and human rights for me and so many others, your claims of tolerance are meaningless and frankly insulting. I try to have faith that when you speak truths to power, power wants to listen, or at least isn't explicitly trying to hurt you. If I didn't have that faith, I could not do the advocacy that I do for myself, my friends, and my community. But the only one of you who is willing to have a conversation, a real public conversation, is Slim Nash. The rest of you refuse to truly listen to us, and when we come to you pleading for our rights and our humanity, you pretend that you know our lives better than we do. How can you hear me explain my lived experiences and my needs and then tell me that I'm wrong? By doing so, you are denying my lived reality and my ability to assess my need for basic human rights. Allyship isn't words or feelings, but rather deliberate efforts and decisions. If you are truly as accepting as you want me to believe, prove it by passing fairness ordinance in Bowling Green. Thank you.
Any other? You've already spoken once. Oh, I thought you were coming. Any other? If I could, let me just respond to you. I think you made some statements that weren't exactly true. I don't know about the others, and you said you talked to Slim, and I've never been approached by you about any conversation, so let's. No, what I was saying is, I interpreted that you said you had talked to others and but then I hear you say that we wouldn't listen to you or something along the line. Oh, maybe I misunderstood. Any other? Right here.
Good evening. My name is Francisco Serrano. I reside at five seventy-two Moss Creek Avenue, Bowling Green, Kentucky. I'm currently a student at Western Kentucky University, and I've lived here in Bowling Green my entire life, so I was raised here, born and raised here. So I'd like to speak to you a little bit. First of all, we'll start off by thanking you all for a while back, my little cousin lost her life at Gordon Avenue. And I know that the city commission here played a huge role in getting a stoplight in that area, a much-needed stoplight, and to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet as well, and to many other people that were involved. So I developed really good views on, or, and relationships with many people during that time, during that hard time, to the Bowling Green Police Department as well for when we held our prayer vigil. I've always been meaning to contact the BGPD for actually diverting traffic when we kind of closed down that road unexpectedly. So again, thank you for that. So basically, what I wanted to talk about today was about fairness. And I wanted you all to imagine going on a walk at WKU with the person you love the most in the world. Now imagine a car pull up to you, to both of you, and then have a cup of, filled with hate flung at you and your loved one, and it hurts them, it hurts both of you. The hateful words ringing in your ears. Go back to Mexico, Spix. There's something that happened last year to me and my girlfriend. And if that's not plain-out discrimination, then I don't know what is. I started thinking to myself, you know, what courses of actions that I should take. Immediately, I called WKUPD, and on four different occasions, they failed to respond to the call. I explained the situation multiple times, and reflecting on this recently, and speaking to many students along the way that had had similar experiences on campus, is what motivated me to come up here today and speak to you all on the importance of having set laws that protect individuals. If there were no set laws that protected me and my situation, then there would have been no reprimands or anything for those, or for the police department to get better. There were no, there would have been no policy changes. There were, of course, policy changes that followed my situation. And upon speaking to many of my friends who are of the LGBTQ community, they have also expressed similar occasions that have happened to them on campus. And I can only imagine, you know, the Bowling Green Human Rights Commission, they do great work here. And I went through them, they were one of the first channels that I went through when, you know, the situation happened to me and my girlfriend on campus. They recommended me to the Kentucky Human Rights Commission, which were wonderful in helping the situation and making sure that the situation that happened to me and my girlfriend never happened to anyone. And we need to have fairness. We need to have fairness for everyone.
I agree with you. And I think I'm one in this room here tonight that can understand what you are saying. Similar things in my seventy-two years, well, I'll give maybe three or four off for being a small tot, if that's what they call them, but I'm familiar with those words. I've heard those many a time. And we're gonna be all right. Any other?
Thank you.
Any other? Our next meeting is September the nineteenth.